Good that we have you.
Oh, thank you.
All right, the time is five seventeen. We call this meeting of the Finance Committee to order. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, then, do you, what do we have recording tonight? Is recording?
We have voice for sure and what you want to add.
Excellent, thank you. All right, do we have a motion for the approval of today's agenda?
Second.
Should we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the question was what had you? Thank you. All right, that's unanimous, approval of agenda. Bear with me a moment, I'm just getting into board docs. All right, today is largely an organizational meeting, our first meeting. To get the lay of the land, we've been tasked by the Board Chair to define our scope of the committee. But before we begin, we have public comments. Do we have any comments tonight from anybody or anyone who has a name?
I'll invoke my constitutional right to remain silent.
Very good, Jim. Anybody else? No? Okay. No comments. Moving on to our next order of business is we are selected per board policy to choose a vice chair. Now, as silly as that is, it is a board policy and as that stands, we're required to do it. It does have some function. If the chair is absent, then the vice chair obviously would resonate. So, any nominations for tonight? Okay. I am, according to board policy, I cannot make as the presiding officer or second a motion.
I second.
Very good, another motion, another policy that may need to be treated. All in favor of Dick Guyer as vice chair? It's unanimous. Congratulations. Review of committee guidelines, just a few. I've already touched on Policy 3.2. The presiding officer cannot make or second a motion. If I need to, I have to pass the gavel. We have to follow that guideline until that perhaps is changed. In regard to minutes, what we're going to do at the committee level is we will have the minutes ready for the following meeting for the committee to approve. And then, Robin, will they then go to the full board?
No.
No, they go right up to the website. Okay. All right, great. Does anybody have any questions about the how it operates? Okay. All right, well, then, let's move, let's move right on to the committee's scope, which is our primary focus here for tonight's meeting. Let's start with the previous scope that was established with our Finance Committee. Everybody should have a copy of that. It was really an itemized list of tasks that the committee thought would be best to work with. But if I may, I just want to offer a suggestion and then I'd like to hear everybody's input, okay? I asked Robin to include our school district organization chart, okay? You should have a copy in your folder. And all things finance under Tanya are listed there. Finance, federal programs, administrative, technology is actually under the purview of Finance Department, procurement, and food service, oddly enough. So, what I was thinking is because this committee is here to service the full board on all things finance, that we would mirror our scope to this. Since Tanya is our point person and if, if the board ever needs something investigated regarding food service or technology, that they would, ours would be the committee that it would be referred to with Tanya as our point person. So, I just wanted to get a feel for what, what you thought of that suggestion in regard to crafting our scope.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, and, yeah, I mean, operations, it's my understanding, and this is off-topic slightly, but our operations used to be part of our Finance Committee years ago, was Finance and Operations. But now we're two very separate and distinct committees with clearly a division of topics to focus on. I sent to Rachel and Dick just sort of a rough draft of an old charter or scope that was crafted some years ago by a board member, Jim Beckett at that time, and he put that together for the HR Committee. And it was a really well-written, what I thought was a really well-written example. There's no reason that has to be accepted by you or embraced by you, but I just wanted to put it forth as something to consider as to what our finished product might look like. And this is probably not in the folder. It's an email, it's an old email that I found from Jim Beckett, who served on the board, who is now our county auditor. I just thought it might give us a framework to start with, but I'm really more interested in hearing what you have to say, what you think the scope would look like going forward. Anybody come again?
I took a look at this and there's a lot of bullet point.
Yes.
And that's fine. To me, the scope should be strategic financial oversight. And in three words, that's, that to me is what the scope should be. And that gives us a lot of flexibility to react to issues that come up. For example, obviously, the transparency reports and so on, you know, when we get, especially from advocacy groups that say, "What about this P card things?" We should then ask the big question, not, not, "Why was this account, why was this credit card used to buy X?" It should be to the financial officer, "What are your controls? Explain to us your controls and how you control access to P cards and how card transactions are handled." That's an example. I think we need to have budget variance reports quarterly. I also believe that we should have an annual budget variance report. So that we have at the end of the fiscal year, what's the total revenue over the total expenses and broken out similarly to your quarterly. The...
Dick, what was the item before the budget, the budget variance reports?
Budget variance report.
Just before that?
Just before that.
What was that?
Something about the transparency.
Transparency, transparency report. You know, I don't, I don't see, I'm not planning on going down the transparency report every month between line by line by line by line. That, that to me is not strategic financial oversight. That is tactical financial oversight. That's why she has a staff to do that. But if something comes up, like P cards and fraudulent purchases through the P card, then we should ask, again, strategic answers or questions rather, is what are your controls? That, that's a strategic, not tactical oversight. The annual, the quarterly budget variance reports, I like the way it's set up. I like the fact that it has what was spent at that time last year. That gives us some ideas of the budget cycle. We should know, you know, some things get expensed at the first part of the year, some things get expensed the last part of the year. So, having the, what the previous performance does is very helpful. The same for the annual, the annual budget variance. What's the big picture? What's the big picture? And as compared to the previous year and maybe even a couple of years back? Because you might have a, you know, a bad year, so to speak. But if you have a bad year three or four years in a row, that's a different issue. The other thing that I think that we need to really look at is we need to, we've got a number of issues coming up, especially when it comes to schools being undersubscribed and those that are oversubscribed and saying, "We need to consolidate schools because we have schools that have too much capacity, and schools that are overcapacity." But a Finance Committee should be able to look at and see what the cost for each school is on a annual basis. And then, that's, that, that number divided by the number of students gives us a cost per student, per school. That's going to be helpful when and if we have to go into discussions and from an operational and academic standpoint. There should be also a financial component to that discussion that we're going to have and then we should be the ones that provide that financial part of the discussion. So, that's one topic. Another topic is the achievement gap. And the achievement gap is primarily an academic question. It also has an operational.
They're all interconnected.
And it also has a financial.
Yes.
And for example, it would be, the Finance Committee should be able to provide when this discussion is being given, that we've taken a look at the cost for all our teachers per school divided by the students. Because I believe that we'll find that the schools with the biggest achievement gap are also our lowest cost schools for teacher salaries because it seems to me that our highest risk schools also have the largest number of new teachers. But you don't, that's an intuitive belief. But if we look at it from a financial standpoint, I think it will become very obvious if that is in fact the case.
Let me ask you something. So, this study of the schools and the number of teachers per school divided by students, is that an agenda item? I mean, is that a primary agenda item for an upcoming meeting where we're really going to set that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. And that's, that's again, a strategic type of information that the board should know that applies to other decisions, like the academic decision, like the operational decision. So, and that's, that's what I, what I'm really looking for is, is the strategic financial oversight. I do not want to get into the weeds.
I know you don't.
So, you'd put it as, so on the scope then, you would label it as strategic financial oversight?
As a general disclaimer. That's the committee's new approach.
And rather than...
It's a very new approach, mind you.
Oh, well, I'm...
That's important, that's important data to add.
But it's important data and it's also, we need to have the flexibility because once you look at it strategically, you're going to find some questions. And those questions then go to the staff to answer that are more tactical.
Gotcha.
But we don't, we should not delve into the, for example, the procedures for P card management. And that's, that's not our, that's not our function.
Um, did you have something?
Well, what did you, a strategic, what, I'm trying to add it as like a bullet point here.
Strategic financial oversight. As a... So, before I forget, you submitted a rather large information request to me as chair and I moved it on to Tanya.
Right.
And where, where do we stand on that, Tanya?
Well, I didn't move on it because I thought that this committee would manage that and establish it on a certain date of the calendar. And so...
What, what, how much time do you need for that request?
Quite a bit of time. So, now, some of the component, one component of that is already done for us, but it may not, there's a whole lot of ways to slice the apple. And so, then it, the ESSA, the new education law, required us to do something new with our finances this year and that is to do a cost per student per school. And we already have that. But it may not slice it in the way you're looking to do it. So, I, that might be a great starting point. You can see what we have. It does include special revenue funds. It excludes capital and debt.
It should.
And possible, I'm not sure about student activities, which is a small piece of the pie. But that would be a great starting point because that was a lot of work that Billy Saunders actually did and I reviewed that was due January 30th or something like that. And that was new for us this year. But it was a very interesting outcome with graphs that showed the levels of spending by each school. So, that would be a great starting point. But what I've heard was you may want to get into just into operation. If you're looking at potentially what is the impact of closing a school, that's a very different conversation. It may only be operational expenditures like heat and air and the energy and telephones and the things that would go away. Because the teacher salaries are not going to go away, they're going to go somewhere else. So, if that, you may want to drill down further. And then, that has not been compiled, so would take... Not significant, but it does, you know, it does take a little time to be able to compile it, so.
Do, here's a question. Do we need something more concrete to trigger this request? In other words, we don't know whether, you know, the referendum committee is going to come back with, we don't know if they're going to recommend consolidation of schools. But is that something we should begin now? And just to be on the safe side and have it, have it compiled, well, which would...
I think the general, the general concept of having a cost of operation for each school and cost of salary of teachers and things like that, I mean, cost for people like to talk about either for... That information, I think, is pertinent, but I think we're a ways away from being able to assume anything and I hate that we put in a lot of work into something like that.
We had to get the data.
Get the data. Well, we all put it in that context.
I actually do have a report on operation expenditures at each school. So, which I had to compile about a week ago. So, I mean, I, I'm prepared to bring it at the next meeting if you'd like to see both the ESS, is it ESSA? I can't remember.
Some people call it ESA, some people say ESPA. I say ESA.
ESA, we'll call it ESA. We, I could bring both and it's not any additional work really. Information, I already showed Dr. Berg the, not the operational, but we talked about the other and the graphics and that sort of thing.
I think looking at that general information first and then seeing if it needs to be boiled down further, you know, at a later date and...
That's fine. I can, I can, you can add that to the agenda and I can just provide those two doc. Now, there, one of them is a graph, okay, on the ESA document, there's a graph of every school and then there's, well, there's a map, a big spreadsheet of all the funding sources, which shouldn't take, I was thinking there might be a page for every school, but I think it's relatively small, five, so I think I can handle that, so.
So, we, so far, we have two potential suggestions and next agenda. We haven't gotten down to our last point on the agenda yet, but we'll give more thought and discussion when we do for future agenda topics.
Are we still on the scope?
We are still on the scope, that's where we are. So, here's what I've heard. I've heard that we're, we're going to move forward with a strategic financial oversight model versus, you know, what we've done in the past. Do you mind the template that I passed to the two of you just as a framework to work with? I'll, I'll type something up, not the old, but the, but the one I sent from the previous board member.
Did you send it?
Yes, I'm going to give it to them.
Oh, the H R, the draft committee chart one?
Yeah, the H R draft committee chart. I'll send that to Robin. But what I, what I told Dick and Rachel is that I'll plug in what I heard today and create a draft and then have everyone look at it. And if it meets their approval, then we would bring it to the next board meeting for approval. Okay, I think that's slated, I think, Tuesday, seven nineteen.
I see that for Tuesday.
For Tuesday, all of our scopes, all the committee scopes.
Everyone has met so far, so they would be approved on Tuesday.
I can have one question.
Yes.
On the recommended scope, there is something that says revenue review liaison with county.
Now, let me, let me clarify. This, this is a little misleading. It's not the recommended scope for what we're focusing today. This was what was recommended prior to...
I guess what my question was, when it says liaison, does that mean the entire committee liaisons with the county or there's one person from here that would then meet with, you know, a representative of the county or...
We could do it, we could structure that. We don't have to take this list and accept it all, by the way. But is that something that you would value, somebody from the committee serving as liaison?
I think it would be absolutely. From early on, too.
Yeah.
It shouldn't just be for the final discussion. It's a preliminary meeting session, you should represent. You, do you go for those?
Well, there's a couple of ways that we communicate with county and in the past, we, a superintendent and I would meet with the county council Finance Committee Chair, which previously was Jerry Stewart, he's not there anymore, and CFO.
Jerry Passon.
Jerry?
Yeah. Not Jerry.
So, we would meet at least three times during the budget cycle. We'd meet coming up soon now, kind of midway, kind of to fine tune millage and collections as the collections begin to come in. And then, we would meet late in the process and maybe make a final adjustment. And I would present and, and or the superintendent to county council Finance Committee at least twice during the process. So, I, so, you know, the Finance Chair can be part of those early, those three discussions or so. I don't know if that's going to be the structure. I know Dr. Berg has met with Jerry recently.
I remember just going on the past, the Finance Chair would be present, but more so, it was the Board Chair that would sort of serve in that role. But I don't see any reason why this committee wants to take that or is putting a liaison role. Let's, let's go ahead and select a person. I don't think it necessarily needs to be me as chair.
I mean, it could be a cycle or something. I mean, whatever you guys want to do. I just thought, I just, it's important that one of us is there.
I would like to appoint someone. I'd like to appoint a liaison. Are I going to be willing to do that, would I to do?
I would be happy to do that.
Okay, let's go ahead and make a motion to make that much...
I second it.
All in favor? Yes, that's unanimous. Dick has been appointed the Finance Committee's liaison. External audit review, which is a bullet point on here in December. I'm assuming because it's parenthetically noted December that we're reviewing the result. But what is not mentioned in here and that is something that we probably should add officially is participation in the RFP committee. Every five years, we have to select a new auditor and it sounds like it fell on the Finance and Operations Committee in the past to do that. So, let's go ahead and form a list that will add that bullet point. Serve on RFP committee to select external auditor. One bullet point on here, change in finance administrative rules. This, according to our board policies, evidently all ARs have to be brought in front of a full board. So, to vet it at the committee level is an unnecessary step. It's, it's one that you might want. We're not going to be making any recommendations on ARs to the full board because the administrative regulations are not purview of the board. So, I'm going to leave it up to the committee, how you want to go with that. You can remove that and just have all administrative regs come to the full board as policy says. What do you think about that? Do you feel...
We can keep whatever policy.
Yeah, we'll keep it with what the policy says now, so.
If any of my work requires a change of an AR, I'm going to bring it. I'll probably go ahead and edit it and bring it to you first so you'll see what the changes are and then we can go to the board.
There's no, there's no harm in you bringing ARs to us. But the board policy says you've still got to go ahead and get out of the board anyway. So, do you want to do the extra work or just...
Well, I brought it today. So, if you, either one, I can, I can just bring it to the full board. It can just be as reference.
I would say let's just go ahead and strike that as a routine process only because it goes against what our board policy says right now. So, let's, let's take out change in finance administrative rules review. Procurement review, I have a suggestion when we get to that point on the agenda for agenda topics. Project budget expense review, budget variance reports. Okay, transparency reports. Dick, you certainly have strong opinions on that. You don't want to get into delving into those pages. Rachel, where do you stand on that matter? Is that something we, we want to strike as a committee or what are your thoughts there?
I agree with Dick in that it should be strategic and not, you know, tactical necessarily. However, I think, you know, completely omitting any type of tactical review of it or committing in fever. Sometimes you can miss things and I'd hate for that to occur. And then, you know, it would be because we weren't doing due diligence or something.
And then, the question comes up also, how do we manage? And I know the last Finance Committee wrestled with this. How do we manage the questions that are coming from the public? Do they go directly to Tanya? Do they filter through the superintendent to Tanya? Do they come through the committee? What's the proper channel? Suggestions? Because there's some pointed questions.
I, I believe we should get the, the committee should get the transparency. I'm not saying don't get it.
Yes.
But I'm, I'm certainly not going to go lying, but I'm going to probably scan it, you know, and see if something pops out and then ask a question. But also, if we did get a question from a citizen about that, we can then go to our list and look at what they're referencing and then bring it forward.
At the committee level.
Yeah, at the committee level.
So, let's, so this is what I think I'm hearing. Transparency reports, let's, let's remove the word review there and just transparency reports monthly and leave it at that. A review might indicate or imply that we're going to go down that list and we're going to, you know, sit, sit through and fine tune come. So, this keeps it on there. If there's anything pressing or pertinent, we've got it. But we're not committed to going through that specifically. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, with regard to the questions submitted from the public, we have a, you know, how that has been done in the past or a policy or how, because maybe that is something that we need to suggest or propose, you know, so that there's streamlined ways to, you know.
I'm giving some perspective. What we were trying to do was prevent the public from going directly to Tanya. It either come through their rep or the board and then go to Tanya because it had gotten out of hand. And that was, that was the whole thing we were trying to do was get some board between the public and this operational meeting.
I think to that, I think we had a uniform response that once we received something like that, that it's just like a blanketed template response. This is going to, so that the public, the person who's made your quest knows this is what's happening with their inquiry and this is going, these are the next steps.
And it's going to go to the committee. And that's what we're trying to get Tanya to tell them when they sent it to them.
Contact your rep.
We're going to contact your rep, this will go to the committee to get them to stop going directly to them.
There are two types of questions I get. FOIA, questions requesting documents. So, I can, and then those are just questions. So, I can see that it's having two canned responses. One is please file a FOIA request or your response and we will work through that process. And the other is I will forward your questions to the Finance Committee, which will be addressed on the next, on the following meeting. will be, uh, addressed on the next, on the following meeting. And so, um, and then any, you know, if there is back and forth after that with others, I just don't respond at that point.
Sure.
So, um, that will be redirected to the finance committee. So that's, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm not a fake, a fan of the back and forth.
I hear you. So, but for the FOIA requests, I think that prompt, that response would probably need to come directly from you, yes?
Yes.
So if it's, you know, if a member of the public has contacted you and you see that it requires production of documents, information you don't have, you can respond to that. But if, you know, Mrs. Smith contacts us and says, what is that, um, charge for rental cars at such and such a score? That we can filter through the committee. That's a simple explanation on the part also.
So I would respond to that one as well?
No, we'll, we'll bring it through the committee, you'll tell us.
Yes.
And then?
But I respond back to the committee member and let them know that it will go through the committee or will committee member, one of the committee members respond that it will go? Which, which would you prefer?
I think probably the easiest way time, time wise and also to make it not so cumbersome is to say that you will submit their inquiry for our next meeting. Can you give them the date of when that next meeting is supposed to occur so that they have some type of idea and?
And I think it should be the chair's responsibility to reply.
And then over.
Any other?
Wouldn't it seem to be right to say, um, contact your representative? And to kind of keep the, because I would like, you know, because in my district, I would kind of like to know that somebody is asking about, uh, Robert Smalls International Academy. I would kind of like to know about that.
Well, my response could be that to the board or to, I usually generally, well, I don't know if I should reply to all in this case, but, um, so that's another question. Reply or reply to all because there may be a large number of people on the, but if I get reply to all, I always reply with BOE only. The distribution was from board. So that you, the full board is aware of, of the question. So, um, I can just, I can reply to all and hit BOE, add BOE. Sometimes every single board member has not been included in that communication, so I'll just continue to do that at that.
That's a good catch-all.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it looks like we've worked our way through the previous scope. We've hammered out some, some new ways of thinking for our new scope, um, revised scope, I should say. Um, everybody's okay with the meeting schedule, that be okay going forward, the third Tuesday, uh, third, uh, Thursday of each month. Um, any, any more on that topic before we move on to the next?
Okay, may I?
Yes.
Um, and as we began the last finance committee, we talked about PEs and in the board committee policy.
Yes.
It talks about performance expectations, um, um.
Do you remember which one is that?
Yes, it is section, uh, policy three point two.
Three point ten. Is it by chance in board docs or should I go?
Um, I think you attached it or it was attached to this.
It was attached.
Me in the board office. Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Um. Uh, policy three point three annual planning cycle.
Mm-hmm.
The, the board will follow an annual.
Okay.
Three point three.
I have this.
The performance expectation.
That's the PEs. Where's the policies?
Oh, oh, on this.
It's in board docs.
Is this the one that you sent me?
No, that's my one.
I mean, it was in board docs, let me put it in.
Oh, I got it.
This one.
I said it's right under.
Maybe it's the one for review committee guidelines.
Oh, review committee guidelines, gotcha. Okay.
It looks like this, it has board.
Here's the folder.
Yes, we're, there you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, on the second page, we're three point three annual planning cycle, rule number one, will be following annual planning cycle, which includes annual work plan that schedules cyclical monitoring, review, requirement of all results, performance expectations, board policy. So I didn't know if that, um, um, meant that PEs would come to the committee or, um, so my, basically my question is, do my PEs come to the committee before they go to the board? Because one of my PEs regard, is quarterly financial statements, which is a budget variance report.
Yeah.
And I'm getting ready to take it to the board next Tuesday. So, um, does it come to this committee first? I would assume since that's part of your scope that that one would.
Recommendation to the full board?
Um, yeah. It has to have approval because it's a PE, so at some point that I would have to have an approval.
Oh, here's another process there, let me just say. Any recommendations that we sign off on as a committee, give to board? According to policy, if a majority of us say, yeah, we, we recommend this, it goes to consent agenda. Okay?
It has to be unanimous goes to consent agenda. Just a majority went to board business.
So.
So if it was unanimous for all three, it would, it would automatically move to consent. If there was just somebody, it was a majority, but not, then it went to board business.
But you can always, even at that time, if it is something that, let's say it was unanimously put.
You could pull it off of consent anytime.
Well, we could just say at the time of the motion to be placed on board business for discussion and so on and so forth.
All right.
So we'll leave it at that. But this is a, a recommendation area you see Tanya, the PEs, that this is something that we can recommend. So, um, so do you want, are you saying you want to establish that as part of our scope? The PEs coming through the committee for recommendations to the full board?
I'm not, I mean, I, I sort of read it that the PEs will come to the board, uh, to the committee first, but, um, you know, I'm open to either one. I know that some of the information the full board would want a full presentation as well.
This is more like a heads up. I mean, this isn't, this isn't coming to us.
Here's what's coming.
For, for editing or anything like that. It's a, it's a heads up that if the full board asks, well, financially, have you seen this? Yes, we have. Do you have any issues with it? Yes, we do. No, we don't. And, and that's all we could say, right?
Yeah. That's all you can say. Recommendation is the most we can make out of the committee.
Or we present it to the full board and then you delve into, to it deeper on the following.
Yeah.
Because we struggle trying to get to even the boards to meet the work plan as far as the timing.
Right.
So if we're meeting, we got to pick that first.
Yeah. Let the finance PEs funnel through the committee for approval and then back to the full board. They, not approval, recommendation. And then back to the full board for approval.
Okay.
But this, this doesn't really imply that it would cycle through the committees though.
It says the, the board.
It says the board. So what we could do is, I don't know if that's a conflict with policy, um, but we could include it within our scope to send it through the committee.
Mm-hmm.
To the full board and tweak the policy to later date maybe, date.
That would make you consistent with the operations committee.
Is that what you think?
Ultimately, which decided last night and we said there, a policy has to get a lot clearer on this. But until we get a clear policy.
Gotcha.
We'll do exactly what you all are doing. So that would be consistent.
Yeah. Okay, taking notes, everything?
Yep.
All right, sounds good. Um, we'll include that in the scope, that the finance PEs will come through. Thanks for letting us know, Dick. Um, all right, let's see, all right, we're here. Are we, uh, are we ready to move on to the fund balance, uh, reg changes that Tanya has for us? And, and again, this is coming to committee first, but going forward, this, these will just go straight to board, the regs.
Uh, would you like me to?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, one of the members of the finance committee, um, brought forth the recommendation, Ms. Cordray actually, um, don't recall the exact timeframe, um, probably in the November time range. And so on the December meeting, um, the committee discussed, uh, a change in the fund balance policy. Basically, uh, right now, the fund balance policy has a, a threshold of 10% minimum fund balance, no less than, and, but the desired target between 13 and 15%. So, um, in order to sort of, it, what, what she's, uh, what she recommended at the time was a, um, a desired target between 15 and 17%. So to raise it up about two percentage points. Um, and so it's really, this chart is a good indication of, um, sort of where, here, I highlighted, um, kind of drew two lines of where we are, 15% and 13%. And we're projected at the end of this year to be at 14.9%. That's with a little bit of a use of fund balance, that's why you see the dip, the dip going down here. So we have gone above, um, we have been below some years and above some years. Um, I would say generally the dips, um, sometimes occur during reassessment, uh, and this is a reassessment year, but, um, so that is the, the goal of, of Ms. Cordray's, um, of her motion. As I, um, this wasn't something that I brought up forward, but the more I worked through it and researched it, the more important I thought this is really, this really is.
Thank you.
So I did some, um, research and did a chart of some peer districts. And then I, I don't really include, I don't know if you can include Charleston and Greenville peer districts because there's so much larger than us, but I thought it was important to bring them in as well. And so I was very surprised by this. Um, the average of those I surveyed, I, Greenville, Charleston, Ori, Berkeley, Richland One, Richland Two, Aiken and Lexington Five, we were in the, uh, currently, for the, for this past fiscal year ended, we were at 16.4. The average of all of these was 19.4. Uh, so I was actually 19.4% of their fund balance. So I was actually very surprised that ours was on the low end of this. There were, uh, uh, there was some lower, there were some lower, there were some in the 28 percentile. Um, so, um, I was, I was kind of surprised by that. Um, but the reason to do it, um, is to, um, is primarily your credit rating. Uh, your credit rating is very important when we go out for bonds and we, um, we sell bonds every year at least in the $20 million range for the 8% capital improvements. Having a potential referendum this fall, it will be even more important to have our fund balance. And if, if there is a, it would be very favorable in the eyes of credit rating agencies such as Moody's who we use, um, if the board has raised that limit and had a commitment to building that fund balance. So that would be very favorable in the eyes of credit rating agencies. And, um, I wouldn't say that it would raise our credit, uh, score. Um, I brought, I thought of this today and I did bring handouts of our latest Moody's credit rating. Um, and it was in July when we sold bonds last year and it talked about fund balance and how, um, ours was a little below the national median of the AA1, um, score, which is, our rating is AA1. It's the second best we can achieve in the, uh, that's possible. A triple A is the, is the top and only one other district in the state has that rating. So we are in a great position, unlikely to go to the triple A because we don't have heavy industry in our area like Greenville. Um, but it, we're certainly a little, little low and below the median in the fund balance and the cash flow area. So I'll be happy to pass these out or share them with everyone, but that is a, a major reason to increase, so.
The, the rule of thumb that I've taught is that your fund balance should equal two months' worth of budget. So that's 16.6% is what, two months' worth of, of one, two twelfths of the, uh, of the year. Um, so I, I'm in favor of having that at about 16. I think it would help our bond rating and it, and it also, a, a lot of people really don't understand what the fund balance is for. They, they, they really don't realize it's operating capital because you don't get all your money upfront. You get your money in cycles. And so you want to be able, you have fixed costs every month, regardless of when the money comes in, that you have to, you have to be able to cover. Uh, so I would really like to see this up to at least 16% in personal opinion.
So you've got an administrative regulation changes that will ensure that?
Well, um, the only place that this fund balance policy is actually currently mentioned is in performance expectation two, or section three, performance expectations, budgeting and financial planning. That's the only place it's currently mentioned. So I, this document is, uh, here's what we're currently at and, and on the performance expectation and here's what the proposed change would be. Um, in the last finance committee meeting, uh, one member expressed a desire to change the AR to include that new range. So this document is editing that administrative rule to reflect the specific targets of, of the board, so, um, those are just proposals.
So, and we have no recommendations, we could not make recommendations.
Right.
They roll, I say, Tanya, I mean, they go back.
Um, they are. I, I go to Robin when I eat one.
Most of the performance expectations.
They went back to, um, Valerie and then when Jeff came, um, the administrators looked at it to combine to see if things needed to be updated. So when Jeff got here, that's when they were last updated.
They were adopted in May, 2008 and revised last on May 2015.
Gotcha. Any questions for Tanya on the administrative regulation changes?
I, I don't know, this might be a question that gets asked later, um, by anybody else, but Tanya, just so, maybe you have that answer for somebody they asked that is on this comparison chart that you have, maybe looking at what their policy is or for their, you know, fund balance, just to see, you know, how do they, how does, how are they balancing their rates out? What is their, their measure, their ratios?
Okay.
Um, that might be something that would be good to point out, you know, for those that are successful or not.
Mm-hmm. All right, we'll move on to the next topic. This is my idea, my must-guess. Um, would the committee be opposed to alternating finance meetings, one at district office, one at the Hilton Hill library? And thank you. And my thinking there is not just to convene meetings, but to bring these meetings to people in, in that part of the county. It's a rarity for us. I, I do have to ask Tanya, you know, it involves, we travel every other month, um, for a meeting. But I do think that the people in that private county would appreciate the convenience of being able to listen in to what you have to say and what the committee is, um.
Sure.
Working on. So, um, um, can we have a motion? A motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Okay.
We will bring that recommendation to the full board.
Mm-hmm. Does, um, does the PE change? Does it require, or do you, does it require a, a vote of this committee or a recommendation or a board? I would assume that.
Performance expectation is full board?
So what, what would my next action be regarding that? Do you want to move forward with that or?
So your, your AR has to go to the full board and the PE changes would have to go to the full board.
So, but are you, are you, is this committee recommending the change up to the?
To the performance expectation.
Correct. Are you unanimously agreeing to? Are you unanimously agreeing to the change?
Yes, let's, let's have this. Yeah, because the PEs will continue to funnel through us. Let's go ahead and have a motion on.
A motion to have a vote on the recommendation.
Okay, but on a list, a list one, um, all in favor? We'll have that too.
That's moving the fund balance to sixteen? That's what you're recommending?
Um, no less than fifteen.
To the recommended, uh, fifteen to seventeen desires are.
So that's the recommendation. The PE is elsewhere. Okay. And then our, our final topic for the evening, proposed future agendas. Rob and I counted two. I have, um, requests for, um,
I have B S S A.
Yes, B S S A.
And then I was trying to get, what was the second one?
The second one was the achievement gap, where we're looking at the cost per teacher, per school divided by the number of students to get that pay.
Sure. I had that with the E S.
Okay. But are they, are they separate? If the second one is, are they both intertwined? Were they two separate?
Two, they're two separate.
Two separate. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Because one's total operation.
Yes.
Maintenance and everything else. Whether it's just the teachers or not the staff.
Right.
It's, you know, just.
Teacher salary.
Just salaries for certified teachers.
Benefits included?
Oh, yes, benefits included, absolutely.
Um, we have one holdover from the previous committee and that's to review the Superintendent Signing Authority. And that was, and I think we do need to handle that as the handoff there. Um, it was based on a previous discussion, um, ha- having to do with, um, uh, dollar thresholds. And, and at what point does the board weigh in versus, uh, other district personnel? So I would imagine that would be a relatively lengthy conversation. So we'll plan, we're gonna try to keep, our goal is maybe keeping our meetings to an hour. Will go as well, but David.
Dr. Burnt feels stronger that he wants to talk about.
Yes, he wants to address it. And he knows that we postponed it today because he still has to gather certificates. We'll, we'll let him know in advance.
And the point was that no organization should have an employee that has unlimited signing authority. That, that was where it started. And Burnt's got his own.
It'll be late. Okay.
So we're not gonna put that on the next agenda?
Um, well, we've already postponed it one minute.
Yeah.
Um, let's, let's, um, we've got three big, big topics for the next agenda. It may be a little, little much.
Will he be ready with what he needs?
Let me, let me touch basis with him on that and see what he, you know, what he'll be prepared. I, I don't wanna put it off too much longer than, because I think that needs to be addressed.
Um, when you get through with the agenda, I just wanna say something.
Okay, okay. Um, so future, these are future topics. They don't all need to go on our next agenda, but certainly we're not having any other suggestions at this time. At some point, I'd like us to look at, um, the exemptions in the procurement code. There are a number of areas that the board may, at its choosing, exempt, um, to be excluded from the normal, um, procurement protocols. And the list is rather extensive. And I just think it might be a good look see for the committee to take a look at those. Again, they don't all have to be in the next agenda, but, um, procurement exemptions. That's the modern two point J, um, and the children's carding, um, and, and the superintendent signing. All right, I have no others. Does it, does, any other committee members? Okay. Any, um, then, probably?
I'd just like to amplify something that David said. I think the key to all of our success is that we work collaboratively and that no committees get compartmentalized. So as David said, until we get, um, review and editing of the policy manual done, we have to live with the policies that exist for better or for worse. Now, I'd like to think that we're reviewing it in a systemic way. However, if you find, as you're evolving, you, what your mission is, if you find a policy that is really getting in the way of what you wanna do, then I would suggest you get to us right away with it. And we can sort of accelerate the review of that particular policy, okay, to, to facilitate everybody's process.
I would suggest if you want a policy change, you go to the board and tell them you want.
Well, that's to be decided. We have, that's to be decided later.
Yeah. Or, you know, if you have.
Or you can get the chair to wave it.
Well, that's true.
We've seen that.
Um, but I think if you have a concern, just throw it out there.
Yeah, because we're trying to do an oil.
And then they can bring forward maybe a recommendation.
We're trying to do a comprehensive review.
You just wanna prioritize. You wanna prioritize.
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
So, yeah, we're, we know, we're, we're probably gonna have some policy changes that will come at this time or something. But, um, all right, well, that, uh, if there's nothing else, that concludes our inaugural Finance Committee meeting. The timing is six fourteen. This meeting was a change.